Okay, good evening, everybody. It's good to see the faces that I can see and it's good to know that people that I can't see are here. So. I guess I'll read the intro and lead us into this. I can get my screen to cooperate here. All right. Excuse me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 2022 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the Chair of this board. For those of you who've never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First of all, ask the applicant to address the group, state your name and address for the record, and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. The floor is then open for anyone who would like to speak in favor or against the proposed project. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony can be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through the deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted unless we're asking you directly for it. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, Planning Department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have three or four members present, and this constitutes a quorum.
Ernie is here. Sorry.
Oh, very good. I went to another screen, so I can't see what's going on there. I will call the roll. Ms. Resonity. Mr. Matso.
Present.
Mr. Landers. Ernie, can you hear me? Tito, you want to confirm that you can see him there?
I see him in the list of panelists. Yeah, he's there.
He's probably still getting his sound active. I'll note that he is present and Mr. Donovan is present. I didn't see anything in our in our June meeting folder about any minutes. I'm assuming there's still a work in progress.
That's great.
I'm here, Kelly. Sorry.
Hi, Ernie.
Hey.
Now we know for sure you're there. All right. All right, so we're, we can get right on to the applicants actually in two minutes. We can't start until time. Five twenty is the scheduled time for our first application. Tito, do you know if our applicant's present?
He appears to be present, yes.
All right.
Mohammed Ishak.
All right, we'll wait just until my clock says five twenty, so we're playing by the rules here. So who else you got there with you, Tito?
Hi, this is.
That's the applicant, Greg Buehl, the illustrious zoning officer, and Dr. Juliet Berlin, our director.
Hi Juliet. Hi Greg.
They said hi.
One more minute and we'll, we'll get this kicked right off. So the applicant, please, please be patient with us and we'll get to you. If you hear dogs barking, it's me. They're being very well behaved at the moment. Well, now I see Ernie.
Oh, I showed up.
Yep.
Hi, Ernie.
It is now five twenty. We can get on with the first app, first and only applicant I have on my agenda. Mohammed Ishak, thirteen Mason Ave, an area variance to allow a six-foot fence where three foot is the maximum height adjacent to a driveway in the R2 Residential one and two unit dwelling district. I heard you just a minute ago. If you would please introduce yourself and state your name and address, and then let us know what your application entails. You're still muted, Mohammed.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Mohammed Isia.
Hi. If you could give us your address and then get into explaining what your application is for.
Okay, my address is thirteen Mason Avenue.
Okay.
I put a front fence. It's a six feet. Unfortunately, it was a misunderstanding reading the approval from the city hall. I made a mistake, but I put a six-foot fence, but after that, the city hall commented we had to decide for three feet, but unfortunately, it's not possible to do that because it's still a insert on the vinyl fence. So then they suggest me to go for a area where the, the variance. So that's what I applied and I'm waiting for the approval from the city hall.
Okay, well, you're in the right place.
Thank you so much.
We're the group that has to discuss it to make it happen, if we can make it happen.
Thank you so much.
All right, members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Is, is this six-foot fence in front of the house or is it along the side? I guess where I was a little confused.
Come again.
Is this, is this six-foot fence along the driveway side facing the neighbors' homes or is it out front of your house?
Oh, no, 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 it's in front of my house, not to the neighbor. I have a right side and left side. I have a big space for the between neighbors and my house. This is in front of my house, my driveway.
Okay, so you have the fence and a gate?
The front of fence, at least I have like twenty-five, twenty-five feet on the both side spaces.
Planning Board and or Greg, do we have any pictures of how it exists now?
So the, the image on the screen is, is prior to the installation of the, of the gate, there's a six-foot vinyl gate, a two, two-panel gate, right? Can you see my cursor moving?
Yeah.
Right here, and that's what needs the, that's what needs the variance because that, that exceeds three feet.
Okay, does the fence extend across the front of the property on the sidewalk line? Tito is.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Is it, is there just a gate or is there a fence all the way across the front of the property?
It's not, it's a, it's a gate.
Just a gate.
The fence is running on parallel to both sides of the driveway and then a gate will enclose the driveway.
I'm gonna pull up some photos right now, Kelly. One sec.
Okay, yeah, I'm having trouble visualizing. I can, I visualize the gate. I get, I get you there. And I see the page fences there in the, in the previous picture. Ernie or Marina or John, are you having same difficulty with?
I, I.
Trying to picture what it?
Yes. I understand.
I understand, but I don't, I'm, what I'm trying to picture is what is the, from our point of view here at this picture, what is left of the driveway look like? That's what I'm trying to picture.
Right. Well, and I'm trying to figure out if it's just the gate, what either goes back to the house or what is the gate accomplishing? It looks like there'd still be a gap behind that urn.
Unless the fence goes back along the driveway line.
Right.
Right, which is what I'm imagining is the situation, but.
Do you want to see the fence? I can show you right now.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Why not?
Sorry, folks, I keep getting kicked off for some reason.
Hey, Brian, how you doing?
Not too bad.
Good to see you.
Was he able to show you the photographs? I haven't seen the photograph.
No, we haven't seen it, but Mohammed's out with his Mohammed's with his phone showing us, I believe.
This is my driveway.
Okay.
I have a right side, like at least more than thirty-five feet on the left side and right side I have another thirty-five feet.
Okay.
I have the gate like this.
There's no way to tell if there's someone walking down that sidewalk when you back out of that driveway.
This is the gate I have on the.
Yeah, I can't see the gate. I, for some reason, I'm not seeing that picture.
It's, it's in his feed, John.
You have to expand his window.
Yeah, click on his window.
Then.
Okay, I see it now.
This is the gate. Window and that little blue box, you can pin it and it'll make it the largest one on the, on the screen.
Well, that didn't work for me. Now we got planning department. Let's go back to this.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
There's the image.
And it swings back towards the house, both gates. Inward swinging. Okay, see. I got a question for you. Typically, do you back out of your driveway or do you drive forward out of your driveway, Mohammed?
I come on the forward because I have a lot of space there to turn my vehicle on the back.
Okay. Okay.
I have my driveway here. I have garage over there. I can turn around the vehicle over here. I have a lot of space and I go forward, not the back up.
Okay.
Can I ask you questions, Brian?
Yes, Brian, go right ahead.
When you pull forward out of your driveway, how do you tell if there's someone on the sidewalk in front of your house?
I can see from the, when I see, you see the, when people are coming from the other side.
On the other side of the driveway.
It's the other side of the driveway also. I have a open. I have the open. You see, when I'm coming from the driveway, this is open on this side. That's open on the other side. This is my door. This is my door.
A child coming down the street sidewalk on a bicycle. If they're not in that little window, you don't see them coming?
So far, it didn't happen anything to me.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Mohammed, for your information, we, we have a pretty good picture of the, from the sidewalk, which shows, so you're good. You can, you can resume participating and you don't have to videos feed us anymore.
Thank you, sir, though.
But thank you. Thank you very much.
Definitely, my pleasure.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the panels from where the door is hinged to the post to the front of your driveway?
Yeah.
Removable?
It's, that's what I say is the, it's a vinyl, but it's inside the vinyl. You see this post inside all put a the bar, steel bars are put it. That's what it's not, it's not removable because of the post. Post already is there. This is winding. Steel bars are there. It's when three feet inside, if I're removing entire three thousand dollars goes to the garbage. That's, that's what I apply for a variance. Otherwise, you know, I never to disobey the city hall or anything. So I love to obey the city hall. Anything if I do small work also, I come in, seek the approval from the city hall. Mr. Greg knows very well. Any small thing, even the basement, if I'm doing a small work, I come in, get the approval. I'm new to this town. I don't want to do anything wrong.
Yeah, you know. I appreciate that now.
If I could add one thing, Marina, if he, if he removed this panel and this panel here, he would still need a variance because the, the code says that the first twelve feet back from the front property line have to be three feet or transparent. So if the zoning board and the zoning board can do that, you know, that you can grant a lesser variance than what's being asked for, so you could say he could have six feet, but that it has to be set back five feet rather than twelve or whatever this distance is.
That looks like about six feet.
It's at least five feet anyway. I'm, I'm looking at it and I'm having a hard time, to be honest with you, myself. When he does pull out, like Brian said, what if there's a little kid running out there? You're not gonna see him when you pull out that driveway.
And I'm having issues with that as well.
On the other side, not so much.
Chain link fence.
It's a nice-looking fence. I mean, it's a
Oh, it's beautiful.
It's a very nice fence, well-executed. I just wish the application had been made before it was installed.
No, before installations, I came and got an approval, but I made a reading because I thought from this point, twelve feet, but I kept it fifteen feet. I started to install fifteen feet, but unfortunately, when Mr. Greg came, he said this point, not that point, this point to fifteen feet. That's a mistake I made it. I thought it's from the curb being from there, from the beginning of the road, but he said curb is from the sidewalk and that, that's from the, I had to go like a twelve feet. That's a mistake. I, it's a honest mistake. I humbly request, I apologize for this mistake. It's, it's on your call. Whatever you, we make a decision, that's your call.
Hey, Mohammed, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The, the flat panel in between the posts, the, the sheet vinyl that makes up a flat, the large flat surface?
Which one, sir? This one?
Right there. Are those removable? Yeah. Are those removable?
This one also attached here in this to the post. So this area, the down, this here, there is no, the steel bar. From here, the steel bar is there. This one, I can short out. If I put a short for three feet over here, these panels cannot go here. That's a problem I face that. That's what the here, here is the steel bars here. This post is the steel bar because of the door. Door come without a steel bars, door can't fix it over there. Right. Otherwise, I can sort out this as you request. This one, I can go for a three feet definitely, but this she just to go inside the bar. This one.
What if he did cut that section down to three feet like it really should be? I mean, then I wouldn't feel as bad because you'd be able to see over that.
If I could too, if he were to cut it down for to three feet, he could have lattice above filling out the rest of the panel and that would comply.
Right.
Yes.
Which part you're talking about? This part, want to cut three feet?
Yeah.
Only this panels, one, two, three panels?
On, on both sides of the, of the gate.
This side also.
Yep. To reduce. To reduce the solid bit by three feet and replace it with lattice.
Okay, so if I cut the, this panel only and let it be this process, so let it be like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, their post is there.
Yeah.
This panels only. So one, two, three, four, five panels, cut it for a three feet.
And then insert a vinyl lattice piece in there to keep your style intact.
Okay, sir. This will be great. I'll talk to the, my, the, who did this contract, Lowe's, so not Lowe's, the guy who came and installed. I'll talk, I'll tell him to cut these panels and put some lettuce, like whatever you're requested. I'll do that. It's so much.
Okay, we're, well, we're not quite done yet. Okay, we have to go through the, the rest of the process, but it sounds, it sounds like that's an option. And I'm hearing members of the board sounding amenable to discuss it. Okay, any other questions for the applicant, you guys?
No.
Ernie, anything?
I have one question.
Sure.
Could the gate just move back to the house?
Come again, sir?
I was just wondering if the, I see the gate is on like the second post. I'm wondering if it could move back to the house. That may be a help with a solution.
Which post, sir? Let me go again to the which one? This panels.
Looks like it's mounted there. I just wondered if it would go to the other post back closer to the house.
This post?
Is that part of, that's part of the issue here? Am I understanding it right? Is the distance?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a post cannot remove because the steel is there inside.
Right, and the other post is hollow, so it's not a structural post.
No.
That's my question. No?
That's right, yeah.
I'm, the other thing I'm not sure is, I don't know, I don't think I've ever tried to look through lattice fencing like for a street. May, maybe it's fine. I don't know.
I don't know. Why couldn't you take that top piece and move it down on top of the fence after they cut it? See that piece that goes across the top there where you don't need the lattice and it'll make the fence still a three-foot height?
I was thinking that as well. Right. If that's something that's doable, I think that makes more sense because the lattice is something that obstructs the view to some degree.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, if it goes down to three, that's better. In my opinion.
Seems to me like they have a, that piece should be able to move down or they have a piece that they can put in place of it. That's all I'm wondering. I I have a page fence, so I don't know the plastic fence, how that works.
Well, they're generally pretty modular, so if it's screwed into the post, I don't see why it couldn't be screwed lower down on the post. Because it seems like.
Right, and then I do believe they make a cap that just plugs in where that, where that connecting piece was up above. I believe.
Folks, I'm getting a message that my internet connection is unstable. I've already been kicked off twice. My observation, my question was on the side that faces the pen chain link fence, it looks like there's two open slots for that fence to be continued down where the paint chain link is. Is there any intention to, to expand that fence down the chain link side?
Hello?
Yeah, Mohammed.
Yes, sir.
The question was, if you're, if you're standing, looking in your driveway towards your house.
Okay.
To the, to the right-hand side, is there any intention for you to expand the vinyl fence in that direction?
Oh, yes, right and left. I have both side, right side I have at least twenty feet to extensions towards my house side and my, my other side is at least forty feet are there. You can see that. I don't see, my camera is visible. If you can see the camera, I'm not in the camera. You can see the camera.
I can see your face.
You can see my face, then I can turn around. So you see, you see, this is my house.
Yep.
On my right side, it's a, the chain fence.
Okay, in that area, are you planning to put vinyl fence in, in the near future?
If I'm putting three feet is okay or no?
Yeah, three feet would be okay there.
Three fence will be okay. The reason I ask is because there's openings just like on the other side, on that facing down that line.
Other side is, I have like thirty feet, but I have no idea to put it a fence over here because over here, you see this, this is gas line. This is a water line. So if I'm putting, it's going to close it near, in the future, if they come and now do some, any work, I'd remove the fence. So I have no idea for this area to put it any fence. Maybe on that side, I don't know, not right now, or maybe two years, three years later, if I'm putting three fence on that side.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, Mohammed, so we're done with questions for you at this moment.
Okay, sir.
Stick around, we may have more. But now we have to go through the process of opening this for public public hearing for people to speak in favor or against, and then we have to deliberate. Okay, just, just letting you know what we're doing here. Okay. At this point, I would like to make a motion to open this for public hearing. I would also like to move that this is a, a secret type two action requiring no environmental review and that that for purposes of environmental review, the ZBA is the lead. Could I have a second? All in favor?
I.
I. Okay. So. Is there anybody online currently, Tito, that we can see that may want to speak in favor or against the proposed project?
We have Luke in the attendees list. I've just given him the ability to speak if he'd like to.
Okay.
Hi, yes, I'm Mohammed's neighbor.
Hi, Luke.
Hi, how are you? I'll be honest with you guys, you know what I mean? Mohammed's a great guy and he did what I think is a beautiful job with this house and I feel horrible for what's going on here. I understand the concern, but at the same time, you know, I feel horrible to see him have to change anything because as we know in this town, not many people look to do updates to their homes. So to see him do this update and now have to spend more money to change it, which like I said, I completely understand the concern. But you know, at the same time, maybe there could be an exception made or something very minimal that's not going to cost him a lot more money to have to change things.
Okay. So as, as a neighbor, you're good with it existing as it is?
Yeah, I mean, I live literally right across the street and like I said, I, you know, I could see the concern, but I also see him leave his house daily, very carefully, and I, and I still know there, there's a slight risk of safety, but you, you know what I mean? It's just, I'm sure yous can understand that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, he's trying his best and you know, he's doing nothing but good things for the neighborhood. So I hate to see him have to start paying big money to start changing things and really, I feel like the contractor should have, shouldn't have even allowed it if that's the case, you know? These guys that are supposed to be licensed and whatnot, you think they would have stepped in and been like, listen, this makes absolutely zero sense. You know, we can't do it for you.
What you just said there makes a lot of sense, sir. All right, Luke, thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak. Like I said, I respect the process. I just, you know, for, for his sake and everybody else's, I hope it's very minimal what, what he has to do from this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Hey, Tito, is anybody else waiting to speak?
No calls and no other attendees and we did not receive any letters.
Okay. All right. How about reading the number that folks need to call in if anybody happens to be lurking out there? Give them the number to call in and speak and we'll give a couple of minutes to, for them to do so.
The number is six zero seven 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 two seven zero two eight, seven seven two seven zero two eight.
I gotta say, it is a very nice-looking fence. The work was, that was done was done well. I, I just feel bad for the applicant that that the installer is not more aware of the rules in the city.
I would have, myself would have thought that the installer is responsible to get the permit personally to make sure the rules are within the code.
Yeah, a lot of times you're depending on your contractor to know.
Right.
Since they have the experience. I mean, granted, I realize the ultimate responsible party in a situation like this is the owner. But it
I understand.
It frustrates me too.
And I showed him the contractor, I showed him my certificate, which my Greg, which Mr. Greg issued to me. I showed him, but he said that this is fine, that I'm not expert on this. This kind of work. So contractor didn't say anything and what, but Luke's dad, he came and told me, Mohammed, you can't put a six-foot fence. I said, I got approval, I showed the. You can't put a six feet fence. Uh, I said I got approval, I showed the contractor, he said, okay. He said, uh, you know, Mohammed, uh, I think it's you can't do that, uh. But same way after installations today, Mister Greg came and said, uh, no, six feet, you can't put it. Then only, oh my God, I said, what to do? What am I supposed to do?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I feel very sad, uh, very, uh, I'm. I don't know what to say. I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Oh. I I feel badly for you on your behalf, um, because it is a nice looking project. Uh, any calls, Tito?
No.
All right. Well, let's continue to monitor that. And if they do call in whilst we're doing deliberations, please, please feel to interrupt me. Brian, is that okay with you?
On me.
All right. Then at this point, uh barring any further comment, I would uh move to. Close the public hearing for thirteen Mason Ave. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now we have to go through the criteria, Mohammed, and that's uh just for your information, whether this this uh granting the variance is an undesirable change. Was there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? And does it have an adverse reverse impact on the community and whether or not self-created? Okay, um undesirable change as as I've as we've all stated, um. The fence looks very, it's professionally installed, looks good. Um, so a- as far as the. Is it being an undesirable um change? It doesn't look bad. It looks good. Um, well done.
Um, thank you, sir.
Yeah, but whether or not allowing it to be six feet, is that undesirable? Maybe. Uh, I'm sorry, Mohammed, we're gonna have to ask you to mute yourself until we get done with deliberations. If you could. Thank you.
Come again, sir?
It could you mute yourself until we're done with the deliberations?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. All right, um, any other comment on undesirable change?
No, like you say, I mean, the only thing I have undesirable is that it should be three feet at that end. I hate to make the man spend more money, but.
Well, then let's go.
I'm looking at safety.
Let's look, let's look at the next item up uh that we have to determine reasonable alternative. Um. Is there a reasonable alternative? And I'd say yes, we talked about two of them already. Um, because I'm getting the feeling that uh granting the full six feet up to the. Uh sidewalk is probably not going to be acceptable to the majority here.
Yes.
At least on the right side. Um, so what are the reasonable alternatives? We talked about. Uh, dropping to three feet height with lattice or dropping to three feet period.
Yes, I think dropping to three feet period would be just as well as long as they can cap the top of that fence.
Yeah, that's the only uh. Concern I would have is i- that it would still look finished when when that's done. And I can't imagine it wouldn't be, you know, yes, the caps that are on there. I don't know if they're reusable. Um, probably might have to get another two caps to put on the on the on the tops there. Or the cap board, the the section that sits on the panel. Uh, I don't know how easily they come apart. But I think at the what's what's the what was the group think is uh and by the way. The the code calls for ten feet back. So I mean, that would be beyond where the gate is.
Twelve, Kelly, it's twelve feet.
Okay, twelve feet.
And Tito, can you can you clarify, is it from the back of sidewalk or from the front of sidewalk? Twelve feet from the front property line.
Which should be the back of sidewalk.
Correct.
Right, okay. So regardless, we're we're looking at. You know, three to four feet ish, four, four feet ish uh of three foot. High, is that gonna be, is that? A reasonable alternative that we're willing to uh.
I I would rather see it back to that next hole, second pole to three foot. I I would got it there.
So I would too.
It's about five feet.
I would too, but as Ernie asked him, uh, the second pole back, the one that is not currently where the gate is. That uh that one's not. Meant to.
I'm not asking him to cut that pole down. I'm asking him to take that section of fence, that first panel and lower that part down.
Well, then you'd also have to lower the gate too.
No, you wouldn't. That gate's fast into that second pole.
It is.
When it's closed, it'd be six feet high.
Right, and it is gonna be open when you drive through it.
Right, and it would be open when he opens the gates. He's got that five foot of section that's open.
So right. So I can try to clarify what all you're all talking about. John, Mister Motto, you're saying that from the sidewalk to the post that has the gate on it. That should be lowered to three feet from there back stays high. The fence, the gate itself can stay high. Swings backwards to be open, you would still have. Four, five foot of three foot fence that you could see over when you pull out.
Yes.
Okay, I thi- I think we're saying the same thing, John.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about making a.
I want to clarify.
I thought you were talking about making a three foot fence back further down the driveway.
No, 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 just the. The five foot or six foot section, whatever that section is, from where the gate is forward.
It's it's still gonna be a limited sight view when you're pulling out and it's gonna require, uh, you know, a lot of caution. But still.
I guess my question was, and I and I know I wasn't, I was dropped at the time. Can that front panel just be removed and capped like the one on the side that has the chain link fence has the two openings that clearly have to be capped?
I don't know how easy that is to do.
That was my question, because I know a little bit about this fence because my niece just had this fence type of fence from Lowe's put in. So I believe those panels, they just pop in, they would pop out. And then they they sell caps that go into that post, so you really wouldn't know that front section was there. That may be actually a cheaper, but he may want to have it reworked to three feet.
Uh, you mean on the poster on the fence itself that makes?
For the post.
Yes, on the post.
They do make. On the post where that cross member is going into it.
Yes.
You know, you don't have to replace the post, you just put a cap into that.
Right, you cut it off and put a cap on.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are. Well, yeah. But the 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 main point of our discussion there would be that final section as you approach the sidewalk. Needs to have a viewable area above three feet.
Yes.
It can only solid up to three feet.
Yes.
Yes.
Just that final section. Okay, and that's, so let's talk about substantial. Is allowing that area variance, would that be a substantial change from what's allowed?
I would think so.
Yeah.
It's kind of substantial, but it's way less substantial than what they're asked than than leaving it as built. Correct?
Correct.
And are we good with that?
I'm fine with that.
I just want to say from when he walked down through, I think the the key spot where you get to see is. That first section, there was a little gap there. Um, that seems to see where that that seems to be the area you're gonna see that. Sidewalk in front of the house, so I'm good with it if you want the end section, but. Personally, I think if that was lower back toward the house, it may look better and actually give you a better view.
Yeah. Okay. Whether or not this uh granting any of these uh discussions would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Um, the only thing that's gonna have an adverse impact is leaving the six foot high all the way to the street. I could easily see. Um. Something happening, coming out there even as cautiously as you can with somebody coming down the sidewalk. I mean, it could be the it could be the postman, you wouldn't see him. If they're not, if they're not over six foot tall and they move and as we've seen, many of them, they 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 can get around. Um, so a- I mean, as submitted, uh, I think it's a negative uh impact, but with the. With a reasonable alternative, not so adverse. Actually, it's a very nice and. It's a very nice looking project and uh was it self-created? Yeah. And I I hate to say that, but yeah, and I I wish our contractors around the area would do a better job of informing their clients. Uh, because they should know the rules. Um, are we ready to make any kind of a um proposal or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can you make a motion? We can vote on, John?
Yes, I can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve this six foot high fence. But cut off at the front post at a three foot high section at thirteen Mason Avenue. For visibility when he is pulling out of his driveway, but to leave the gates at six foot.
Okay, so that'd be both sides of the driveway down to three foot. All right, can I get a second for that uh motion?
Second.
All in favor?
You go down it, can I just clarify?
Yep.
Cause I want Tito to be able to capture this for the decision. From this from the back of sidewalk to that first post where the gates are connected, that must be at least. No more than three foot high. That's giving a variant, a limited variance for that.
Yeah, correct. What we're gonna do is we're gonna get that distance from that first post to the sidewalk and we're gonna say. Um, that you guys are allowing a six foot high privacy fence. Set back, let's say, five feet from the front property line uh as opposed to twelve feet, which is the minimum.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and.
Make sure for clarity, Tito knew what he was, what we were writing in the decision.
Yep, and uh with all that together, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's four and zero. All right, um. I would say that uh that that is the decision we've gotten at this point for the applicant. Uh applicant, when you go out to try to get this uh change uh put into place. If you run into any kind of problems, make sure that you call with the planning uh department. To let us know what if any problems you do encounter. All right. Thank you very much. Um, and that gets us through with our cases for the day. Do we have any other business before us? Tito, you got anything? Juliet, anybody?
We have no other business.
All right, thank you very much.
Mister Donovan, all I can say is that there continues to be rumblings from the state that the. State of emergency, which allows us to meet remotely like this, may be coming to a close.
Soon, goodness, yes.
Fifteen and then it keeps getting moved. It may get moved again, but I just whenever prepared, you may get a short notice that. The next meeting has to be in person, so.
Okay.
Just be aware of that.
And we're still making sure we have a spot to do it, right? Because we're gonna be, uh, aren't we gonna be butting up against these uh city council?
Yeah, so that, so we'll be reaching out about that because it it may be moved to Tuesday, which I know is a problem for some members.
Um. And Tuesday is not not a big problem for me, but I I want to make sure we get a quorum.
Unless we can get a different room outside of council chambers, but. We'll let you all know.
Okay, well, let us know when you know. All right, then I would uh make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned till next month. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tito.
Bye, guys.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.